Cell phones, about some news about 11 o'clock, about, probably ought to just turn your cellphone completely off. He's going to tell you why. And the invocation today is going to be led by Pastor Felix Bermejo from Eloy. And then the pledge by Supervisor Goodman.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day of life. We thank you for your blessings. The Bible says, rejoice, pray without ceasing, give thanks in all circumstances, for this is God's will for all of you in Christ Jesus. Heavenly Father, we ask you your blessings upon our leaders, and we ask you that you give them wisdom, that they can solve some of the problems that we are facing throughout the whole world. We ask you that your blessing, your loving kindness, and your peace, protection be upon our families, be upon our communities, be upon our country, according to your loving kindness and your mercy. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the meeting to order. And first up, we'll have a call to the public. I don't have any forms handed in, but would anybody like to speak today?
And Chairman, before we get started, if we can just announce that Supervisor Kavanaugh is attending telephonically, and he is on the line. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, anybody would like to speak, just approach the mic and tell us who you are, where you're from, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Tom Bean Casacarende. First off, I want to give a happy birthday to Garland James, 102 years old, and welcome to these meetings here. In 1996, I was elated to learn that I was being nominated to the Electoral College to represent Bill Clinton. I awaited with eagerness for my sample ballot to arrive, and my name appeared at the top of the list. Of course, it was alphabetical, but, you know, whatever. A few people called me, wondering, why was I on the ballot for President of the United States? And I gave them a little lecture on the Electoral College. I said, did you know you did not vote for Bill Clinton? Oh, I most certainly did. No, you didn't. You voted for me and the other seven electors. We then go to Phoenix, to the Secretary of State's office, and we vote for Bill Clinton. Wow, that was such a shock to so many people. But, boy, I mean, you can't believe the honor. However, now, I've got a problem, and some people don't see it as a problem. I did run for the precinct committee this last term, and I asked a few of my neighbors to be sure and look for my name on the ballot and vote for me. My name wasn't on the ballot. If you are unopposed, they don't put your name on the ballot. And I consider this undemocratic, not democracy. When I vote for somebody, I do it with pride, but how do I do it when their name's not there? And what if I don't want to vote for them? I can't vote for them because I can't vote for them. I want to see us go back. I don't know where this came from, a state law, or, I have no idea. I've talked to a few people. Oh, Tom, it just happened years ago. People should see their name on a ballot, whether you are the candidate or whether you are the voter. If I want to vote against somebody, how do I do it when the page is blank? If somebody there on the board can do something, I know if Steve ran in this next election, I assume you will, I bet anything you're going to be unopposed in the primary. Does that mean your name's not on the ballot? I don't know. It's criminal, in my book. Democracy is about who is being elected, and I would appreciate that you start the ball rolling. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, at last week's board meeting, you received the Auditor General's annual audit report that disclosed six significant deficiencies and three material weaknesses that pose an undisputed threat to the financial integrity of Pinal County. You heard specific reference to one department. Two days later, after the auditor's report, thanks to our free press, we learned of a second department's vulnerability to financial abuse. We learned that Pinal County Sheriff Lamb's office spent $217,000 from the jail's commissary fund on guns, bullets, and vests, in apparent violation of Arizona state law. Under Title 31, those funds are designated, quote, "for the education and welfare of inmates", unquote. Clearly, guns, bullets, and vests can in no way be justified as educating or benefiting the welfare of inmates. That same Title 31, the chairman of our state law, provides that the county Board of Supervisors, you all, may authorize a biannual audit of the canteen operations at any jail facility referred to in this section. In my comments to you last week, I asked you to take advantage of the presence of audit experts in front of you by asking them about concerns that their findings of significant deficiencies and material weaknesses pose risks within the largest consumer of our county's budget. You apparently ignored that suggestion. Now, thanks to inquisitive newspaper reporting, we learned that indeed, there are risks and actual violation, allegedly, of state law in unlawful spending by the sheriff's office. As public officials, you have a broad fiduciary obligation to carry out your duties in a manner faithful to the public trust you accepted as members of this board. Do not allow yourselves to be blamed for the misuse of public funds by careless or willful misuse of the budget over which you have statutory responsibility. You heard the alarm bells from auditors last week. Please, exercise the authority that state law provides you. Demand an independent performance and financial audit of our sheriff's office, whose mishandling of funds can no longer be ignored. May I hear your direction to staff? Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Anyone else?
Jack Mattishoni from Apache Junction. I just wanted to share that I was looking at the agenda, and I want to commend this Board of Supervisors on the Red Ribbon Week coming up. It's not because, that's not why I'm wearing this red ribbon, but I do support what they're doing. It's Red Ribbon USA is what I'm here for also. But I do want to say that the Red Ribbon Week is very important, I think, and it's mainly for the schools. I hope it is something the board or the staff would consider to maybe educate your staff on the same concept, which is how to, you know, how important sobriety is and the message that you carry. I unfortunately was involved in drug interdiction operations in South America back in the 80s. I do know who Kiki is, and it's an honor for him and other people for us to remember him and what they do. The DEA is very important, and I just wanted, that's all I really wanted to say. I just commend you guys for having this Red Ribbon Week. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ravelas did ask the chairman to look into this, and we are going to invite the sheriff to come next week. He's not on the agenda today to address these. And Mr. McClure, can you assist me in what you saw? Even though you weren't named, I'm now asking for your help.
There you go. Mr. Liu, I just direct staff to, or, direct staff to work with the sheriff's department, the county attorney's office, on the inmate welfare fund and report back, please.
Yes, sir.
As soon as possible would be great. Okay. And now, on to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you had alluded to earlier about the cell phones, today, there's going to be a nationwide emergency alert test. The Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Communications Commission is conducting a nationwide test on the alert, emergency alert system and wireless emergency alert system, and it'll be around 11:20. So we may be in this meeting, or we may be out already, but what's going to happen is, in their quotes, "Testing emergency communication systems ensures that when a crisis strikes, our words and warnings reach those who need them most, bridging the gap between disaster and safety. We want to ensure Arizonans are aware of the scheduled test on their phones, radios, and televisions. Wireless phones will receive the message once. Here's what to expect from the test. Around 11:20, MST cell towers will broadcast the test for about 30 minutes. The messages on the phones will read, 'This is a test of the National Wireless Emergency Alert System. No action is needed.' They will also have that in Spanish as well." And so, there's also some for people with disabilities, so they'll get the message to accommodate them as well. If we're here, like I said, everybody just turn it, and that's what will be happening at the same time to most of us.
Can we just head to the subway for the bunker?
Underneath those stairs?
Right, yeah, right there, okay.
And the other announcement is that quite a few, well, maybe about four years ago now, give or take, back when Greg Stanley was the manager and Tim Knabel was Economic Development Director, there was a project called Nicola that was supposed to go to Buckeye in the West Valley. And as that project and deal fell apart, there is an Commerce Authority and a landowner here, Saint Holdings, and the city of Coolidge and the county worked together quickly to not only salvage the project, but to land it there in Coolidge. And then, in addition to that, our Public Works Department got a federal grant to help build out the road, Hauser Road, and the turning lane and signal light that you see there now on the 87. Got awarded the grant and executed. Those roads are live today, enables the company to, for their logistics and employees. So on Thursday, this past Thursday, they had an event to kick off and celebrate really the reason why the company exists, which is the hydrogen fuel electric freight truck. And so they had been producing the electric truck now for a couple of years, but you're limited in the amount of miles because of the weight of the battery in those. So really, kind of their patent and their market differentiator is that they can do long hauls with quick fueling when they add the hydrogen fuel cell. So there was a celebration of that that occurred on Thursday, and we have a couple of video clips from that, just to let you all know the success in the moment and, as well as the public.
Today's a truly momentous day for Nicola. Although I've only been CEO for a short time, I've been part of the Nicola team since the spring of 2020. Over the past three years, we've had ups, we've had downs, we've had a bit of excitement. My friends ask me, how are things at Nicola? I tell them, every day is an amazing day at Nicola, sometimes positive, sometimes less so. But what never wavers is the spirit of the team, the driver of the whole organization, and the support of our partners, our investors, and the public. And we're here. Today is so much more than the celebration of the commercial launch of a truck. It's the realization of a dream, the completion of a mission. This is a company that said we'd always have a hydrogen fuel cell electric truck on sale in 2023. We do, today. Three years ago, where you sit right now, was a patch of dirt. Today, it's a state-of-the-art facility staffed by a team of 187 who are crafting two models of zero emission trucks. We evolved, we thrived, and you see the result. The first U.S.-assembled hydrogen fuel cell Class 8 electric truck available in this market, assembled right here in Arizona with engineering support from here and the best minds around the world. It energizes me to see all of you here, equally proud and excited. Here with us today are representatives from our key suppliers, dealer, network, customers, government, business, community leaders, valued members of the media, and of course, the Nicola team, all here to celebrate. What are we celebrating? We're looking at a truck that has up to 500 miles of range, that can be fueled in up to 20 minutes, and only emits water. We're not blowing smoke, literally or figuratively. We said what we were going to do, and we're doing it. Pedro, tell us about the product development of the truck.
Thank you, Steve, for this question. Let's talk about product. First of all, as you guys know, uptime, safety, and reliability is stable stakes in the trucking industry. Such, therefore, our team performed rigorous testing and validation on this product. Recently, we completed our second summer testing here in Arizona in the midst of the highest temperatures recorded in years. From the cold, we don't shy from the cold either. We completed our second winter testing in Michigan Upper Peninsula just this past winter. We also taken this truck very recently to high-altitude testing in Colorado. Why are we doing this? We want to expose this truck to corner cases so that we ensure that we are delivering a product that is safe and reliable to our customers.
Thank you. And can you just tell us a few of the, like, the wow features in this thing?
Definitely. This product, Steve, was engineered with our fleet customers and drivers front and center. The simplicity of this truck, the ability to just go, push a button and go. Remember, our customers don't make money when this truck, when the wheels are not moving, so this truck just go for hundreds of miles. So simple, they stop, they use the energy refueling for a few minutes, and they just keep going again for miles. Recently, this truck in California, some of this has gone up to 900 miles in a single day. Are there any other zero emission trucks out there to do this? Another great feedback we are getting from our customers is how the data analytics we are, we're able to do in this. This is on their own words. This is cutting-edge. This is leading. Not, forget about the zero emission trucks. In the trucking industry, there is no other truck out there that has the ability for our customers to collect data, to learn from it. Remember, they have to make sure their operations are tuned for these new technologies, and the amount of data that we are giving them, the experience in the cab, is just awesome for them.
That's great. So we've had a number of companies do pilot programs with these trucks. Can you tell us some of the feedback we've gotten from those companies?
The main feedback, I'm sure some of you will get today when you get to get into this truck, is just the wow effect. Once you get into it, oh my God, it's like you're in a premium car. The ride of it, so smooth. The drivers, once they drive it, they don't want to drive another truck. And I really, really encourage every one of you to get on these trucks out there in the ride and drive later today. This is market-leading, and you could see it in some of the videos that we put out there. The ability for our customers to just enjoy the ride. Remember, some of these drivers, they spend 10 hours, eight hours, nine hours a day in these trucks. Driver retention, huge for our customers. Why? Because that reduces their cost of ownership, their TCO. So definitely, our customers are very happy with these trucks, with the interior, the exterior, and the performance as well.
I'll just close as they show the truck driving up. This is the quote from the president of the Arizona Commerce Authority. "We are proud to celebrate the launch of Nicola's innovative hydrogen fuel cell electric vehicle production facility in Coolidge. Nicola's investment in Arizona's electric vehicle supply chain and their partnership with leading suppliers are driving further economic growth. We look forward to supporting Nicola's success as the company continues to shape the future of transportation from Coolidge." Thank you, Chairman, and Supervisor Miller was there. I think you might want to comment on this as well.
He does, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When Leo started out with the conversation about Tim Knabel and Greg Stanley, Tim went to Greg and said, "They want an elected official to come to this meeting." And Greg Stanley said, "Take Miller." I don't know why he said that, but he sent me. It, you know, and I've been around economic development for a while, being on the city council and stuff. It was a really interesting meeting, and I'd done a little homework on their problems in the West Valley. Anyway, we're in this room, and I finally say to them, "What do you want?" And they gave a list of normal things that site selectors are looking for. I said, "When do you want it?" They said, "When can you get it?" I said, "I guarantee it in three weeks." He said, "No way." I said, "Yes, way. Maybe two weeks, but I'll guarantee three weeks." We delivered it in two and a half weeks, all the information they needed. We met a month later on the banks of the canal out there, hotter than the hells of hub, hub of hell. Anyway, sweating like crazy, and I said, "What do you want?" They said, "Can you deliver?" I said, "Every one of these guys has my cellphone number, and I have their cellphone numbers." And there was, Coolidge was there. We had a lot of people there from all different, and that's what, the point I want to make is, economic development is a team sport. It is, it takes a team of everybody working together to bring these types of projects in. But anyway, three days later, they called back and said, "We're coming to Coolidge." So it was really kind of one of those moments that, that not everybody gets to see from the politician's side or from this side of the dais, but it was, and I, I really think that this truck thing is going to be a bigger game changer than even the cars. I really think there's more to this than meets the eye. So, but anyway, I wanted to share those moments with you because it was really fun, and I'm very proud of Nicola and their product. Thank you.
I told him, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. This is the time for, does anybody have district reports from your district?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to make a public announcement. We have an open house coming up on the 15th and 16th of October at the Central Arizona College on Bella Vista, and it's in regards to the CAP Parkway that the county is moving forward on, and we're inviting all the public to come and for their public input and give out the information. The times are from 5:30 to 7:30. Many of our staff will be there. We've got the sheriff's department going to be representative, represented, and so on and so forth. ADOT will be a part of the conversation with this as well. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware of those two dates.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have is next week, starting Wednesday, will be the CSA Legislative Summit starting, and so I'll be in Flagstaff Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, hoping to set forth some legislative policy that we might want to see at the state legislature next year.
Mr. Kavanaugh, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Calvin Coolidge Day is on 13th through the 15th of October. The 20th anniversary of the city of Maricopa is October 13th through the 15th as well, a couple of good events for folks to attend. The Coolidge Gain Night is October 19th, Getting Arizonans Involved in Neighborhood with Crime Prevention. And Coolidge has the Halloween Carnival, October 31st, at the Kenilworth Sports Complex. And I also attended the celebration at Nicola, and I think it's really important to recognize not only Nicola, but Saint Holdings and the work that Steve Miller did to land this great business in three weeks, and they took three days to make a decision, as you heard. And I think it's important that we engage even smaller businesses with this kind of zeal moving forward. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
And I have one thing, Mr. Chair. I'll be in Mammoth at the Rec Center on Friday at 5:30 to 7:00. We're going to be serving pizza and sodas, and we'll be talking about Skip, which is the San Carlos Irrigation Project and the issues they're having, not that they're having, but with their customers having, with their electric bills, and discussing the history and what we're doing about that with Congress and others.
And I only have one. The city of Superior is having their State of the City tomorrow evening, 6 o'clock at Bessech Park, so.
And now, it is my honor to introduce a video in recognition of Garland James, who lives in Gold Canyon, and he is 102 years old, World War II veteran, and what he did in World War II was very interesting. A lot of things happened. Everybody sees movies of what's going on, but then afterwards, what happens. And do we have that video queued up? And then after this video, we have an award for Garland.
So, as you can see, not only America, but all of Europe recognizes what you did, and so I want to come give you this award.
So today, basically Proclamation Day, we have several, and I apologize for not wearing a suit jacket like my colleagues. I thought it was going to be a quick meeting, and so, hope I don't ruin it.
And the, I'm representing the Arizona Elks and the Casa Grande Valley Elks, 1957, in asking for a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. Do you have one that I can read?
We're going to vote on this.
Going to vote on it first? Okay.
If we approve on it, then we're going to have you read it.
Okay.
Could we have a motion on approving this proclamation?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number five, as Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week as presented. Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have approved that proclamation.
And the proclamation reads, whereas the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge, 1957, values the health and safety of all citizens, and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and is contributing to the fact, factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of Red Ribbon Week and the Casa Grande Valley Elks Lodge, number 1957, to involve families, schools, businesses, church, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and to establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without legal, without illegal drugs, or illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas there are many activities planned during Red Ribbon Week campaign in Pinal County. Now therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim October 23rd through October 31st, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week throughout Pinal County, proclaimed this fourth day of October, 2023.
Thank you. Do we want pictures of the board with this?
Sure. With your permission, I would like to give each of you a red ribbon, and the entire gallery, if they would like. The red ribbon says, the choice for me is drug-free, Arizona Elks Association. And by accepting this, you are saying that you will not use illegal drugs or use legal drugs illegally.
Are we going down? by our own Natasha Kennedy.
Natasha Kennedy, clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Chairman, if I may, I would like to respectfully request that our breast cancer survivors come and stand with me. It is important to recognize and appreciate the survivors who stand before you today, and the significance of our presence here. The courage in facing this terrible disease is commendable, and it highlights the existence of the various types of breast cancer that affects all genders in all ages. Each person's experience, as well as our loved ones, is unique and incomparable. The attendance today, it serves as a reminder to express gratitude towards the research, medical professionals, advocates, and former patients who have significantly contribute to the continuance work that is being done to find a cure. Our presence embodies hope and proves that survivors' lives are not defined by the survivor label that we wear today, but are indeed made possible because of it.
Okay, we will come down. We now have to do the same way. We have to vote on the, we're going to accept that. So is there a motion? Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number six as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, it's approved. We can now read it.
Thank you. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease and increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment, and whereas the American Cancer Society recommends annual breast cancer screening with mammograms starting at age 40. Early detection saves lives, so schedule your mammogram today. 15 minutes could save your life. And whereas many organizations continue to search for a cure through vital research, and physicians, public health professionals, and advocates continue to educate our community about the awareness and innovative advancements in early detection and treatment, and whereas the Pinal County Board of Supervisors supports breast cancer research and recognizes the trauma breast cancer brings and understands that this horrible disease strikes women and men within the Pinal County workforce and community. Now therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 2023 is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and recognize all of the above and acknowledge all Pinal County employees and citizens, survivors' strength, and ask all to join in this worthwhile cause, which aims to offer support for those courageously battling this disease, to recognize the many survivors, and to honor those lives lost to this disease, proclaimed this fourth day of October, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and step on it. We're going to do one of just you guys first. Do you want to go over this one? And scooch over just a little bit. There you go. And three, two, one, and again. Three, two, one, one more. Three, two. Here we go. One more. Hold on one second. And three, two, and again. There we go, there we go. And one more. There we go, okay. Go ahead and step on it. We're going to do one of just you guys first. Do you want to go over this one? And scooch over just a little bit. There you go. And three, two, one, and again. Three, two, one, one more. Three, two. There we go. One more. Hold on one second. Let's get one quick, just. No, hold on one second. And three, two, and again. There we go, there we go. And one more. There we go, okay. Go ahead and step on it. We're going to do one of just you guys first. Do you want to go over this one? And scooch over just a little bit. There you go. And three, two, one, and again. Three, two, one, one more. Three, two. There we go. One more. Hold on one second. And three, two, and again. There we go, there we go. And one more. There we go, okay. Go ahead and step on it. We're going to do one of just you guys first. Do you want to go over this one? And scooch over just a little bit. There you go. And three, two, one, and again. Three, two, one, one more. Three, two. There we go. One more. Hold on one second. Let's get one quick, just. No, hold on one second. And three, two, and again. There we go, there we go. And one more. There we go, okay. Go ahead and step on it. We're going to do one of just you guys first. Do you want to go over this one? And scooch over just a little bit. There you go. Okay, and big smiles. Three, two, and one more time. Three, two, one, there we go. We have one more.
That County Attorney Kent Volkmer is going to introduce Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, Chair. Kent Volkmer, Pinal County Attorney. You know, I feel like I say this quite a bit, but I do believe these proclamations are valid. It publicly affirms the position that this board takes, that this county takes. You act as a collective voice for this county. And I know, we're reading them, I know they can drag on, but, but I just ask you to take just a second to think about how important these topics are that we're bringing forward. I mean, just today, you're talking about trying to encourage people not to use drugs. That's 85% of our crime in Pinal County can tie back to drug use and abuse. We're acknowledging survivors, and now I'm asking for one final, and this is really to talk about domestic violence. So what I would ask the board to do is I'd ask the board to approve the agenda item as presented, and then allow me to read the proclamation out loud.
Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item seven as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And we, it is approved.
Thank you, Chair. May I continue? I see a nodding of the head. Whereas domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people, regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. Whereas domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. Whereas in 1998, Congress passed Public Law 101-112, officially designating October National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and such legislation has been passed each year since. Whereas approximately 20 people in the United States are victims of intimate partner violence every minute. Whereas nationwide, an average of three women and one man are killed by current or former intimate partners every day. Whereas on a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner, and 72% of all suicides involve an intimate partner. 72% of all murder suicides, excuse me, involve an intimate partner. Whereas approximately 26% of children under the age of 18 are exposed to domestic violence in their lifetime, and 1 in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. Whereas men exposed to domestic violence as children are four times more likely than other men to perpetuate domestic violence as adults. Whereas in 2022, there were 101 domestic violence-related deaths in Arizona. Whereas in 2022, the Pinal County Attorney's Office Victim Services Division provided services to more than 2,655 victims of domestic violence. Whereas we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that we are providing accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services to victims of intimate partner violence. Whereas it is believed that up to 70% of domestic violence incidents are not reported to law enforcement. Whereas it is time to stop the silence and end the violence. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2023, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and reaffirm the county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists victims of intimate partner violence during Domestic Violence Awareness Month and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to victims of intimate partner violence, so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you.
Tiara.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, purchasing manager for Pinal County, and this is your purchasing report for October 4th, 2023. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 220726, sorry, for public health services. We recommend approval of amendment number two to exercise the optional extension period beginning September 1st, 2023 with the following suppliers. Rebecca N. Strand RN, Cindy L. Sheldon MSN WHNP, and Tanique Vaughn of Nurses Staffing LLC. This contract is used by the Public Health Department. And then finally, the board has requested to approve the following purchase requests per Pinal County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350, governing, governing competition and practicable purchases in the amount of $170,937.05 with Pictometry International Corporation for imagery licensing annual agreement used by the assessor. And that concludes your purchasing division report for October 4th, 2023.
Any discussion or questions?
Whereas we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that we are providing accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services to victims of intimate partner violence. Whereas it is believed that up to 70% of domestic violence incidents are not reported to law enforcement. Whereas it is time to stop the silence and end the violence. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Penal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and reaffirm the county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists victims of intimate partner violence during Domestic Violence Awareness Month and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to victims of intimate partner violence so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you.
Purchasing Division report. Tiara.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, purchasing manager for Penal County, and this is your purchasing report for October 4th, 2023. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 220726, sorry, for Public Health Services. We recommend approval of amendment number two to exercise the optional extension period beginning September 1st, 2023 with the following suppliers: Rebecca N. Strand RN, Cindy L. Sheldon MSN WHNP, and Tanique Vaughn of Nurses Staffing LLC. This contract is used by the Public Health Department. And then finally, the board has requested to approve the following purchase request per Penal County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350 governing competition and practicable purchases in the amount of $170,937.5 with Pictometry International Corporation for Imagery Licensing Annual Agreement used by the assessor. And that concludes your purchasing division report for October 4th, 2023.
Any discussion or questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries.
Thank you.
Consent agenda items will be covered by one vote unless someone wants to pull one. And we have item number E to be pulled by Supervisor Kavanaugh. And does that mean F too? And also item number F by Richard Perrinu. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Are you, Richard? Okay, we're going to pull item number F so you can address that. I'll ask for a motion on the rest of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda A through Q minus, or to pull E and F.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that carries. Can we go on to item number E?
And... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I apologize to Robin Davis for not being there in purpose, in person, excuse me. Our family members decided to get together to fix an elderly relative's roof, and so this was the only weekdays we could do that. So my apologies to Robin for not being there in person. But Robin has been a great help to me as a supervisor, introducing me to the new district, providing enormous amounts of information. And when the opportunity came to appoint her to the Transportation Advisory Committee, she was glad to take it, and I am honored to have her serve on behalf of Penal County. And I'd like to have my assistant Josh Franklin present her with the certificate.
Okay.
And with that, I would move that we approve item E as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And she is approved.
Josh will give that. And I just want to say that this county is so big and our districts are so big that it is a great help to have involved citizens that will help us and advise us on these things. So thank you. Item number F, and you can introduce why you wanted to pull that.
Thank you. My name is Richard Perrinu, and I'm a resident of Oracle. And I wanted to pull this item so I may speak on it for the purposes to change the classification and valuation. According to the ARS, the county board may change any valuation or legal classification of property that is valued by the assessor or hearing officer.
So, Chris, could you explain what this does?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this item is approving the Board of Equalization's hearing decisions. I believe there were multiple decisions that were heard over a course of usually two to three days by a hearing officer that this board appoints. After these decisions, anybody who has an issue with the decision ruling has the ability to then file in tax court. This is part of the procedural process for someone to go ahead and contest their property valuations and so forth.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes. Clarification. Mr. Chairman, Chris, in other words, it's already been to the Board of Equalization. They ruled on a dollar amount, and he's contesting that as well.
A dollar amount and classification.
And classification.
Correct.
And he's challenging that.
Right.
So what's our next step here? I mean, do we, if we don't approve it, what happens? Or do we approve it so he can continue? I just want to be clear.
You have to approve it so it could continue at this point in time because the Board of Equalization has already heard the case and ruled on the matter. So you're affirming that ruling. In fact, you're affirming all of the rulings that they did at that time.
Oh, all of them?
Yep. Because this is not, it's not just this case. There were multiple cases that were heard over the course of a few days.
But to be clear, he can appeal then after this ruling today?
Yes, he can, and I believe we've already received a letter to that effect.
Okay, okay. Just want to be sure. I want to make sure the process is step by step correct.
So you're asking that we approve this or do not approve it?
I would like you to allow me to speak on the agenda item F so that I may make my case for the change in classification.
Is this the time and place for that, Chris? Or will he, is he going to get his chance to be heard later?
Well, if he appeals to tax court, yes. Right now, I believe he's just filed a letter contesting the determination from the Board of Equalization. I mean, it is, Chairman's prerogative as to whether or not you want to entertain any comment on that specific item. He's asking to speak only on the item that affects his piece of property.
Just had someone from Legal. Let's hear. What, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Johnson, County Attorney's Office. By ratifying the decision of the Board of Equalization, it will allow Mr. Perrinu to move forward with whatever appeal he wants to do. This wouldn't be the time and place for him to state his appeal. That would be at the next step once this board ratifies.
We're not going to rule on anything today.
Other than just ratifying it.
So by ratifying it, he can then go with his next step to get...
That is correct.
All right. Okay, any more discussion or questions?
Are you clear on that?
So in the ARS, it allows the county board to make any change in valuation or classification by the assessor or hearing officer. And that's ARS 16104C.
Don't we hire the Board of Equalization to do that for us?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
That is correct, and you do not have an item before you to correct that determination. You have the item to go ahead and approve or disapprove the ratification for the hearing officer's decisions.
And Chairman, if I may, just for the record, the ARS statute that Chris is referencing is going to be ARS Statute 42-16202, which allows the property owner to file within state tax court within 60 days.
Okay. All right, so if we approve this, since he's driven all the way to the county seat today, can we make sure that he gets to file his appeal today? And you guys can walk him through that? Looking for head nodding from... I think he already sent the letter. Or does it have to be in the form of a letter? Or can he save a...
So, Mr. Chairman, Scott Johnson, again, I'm more than happy to give whatever information I can, but I cannot give him legal advice. So I will try to walk him through whatever steps that he needs to do up to the point where I think I'm giving legal advice, and then I can't do that. So yes, absolutely, I will meet with him when we are done, walk him through whatever steps needed to be walked through, and it may be just that he, you know, well, I'll talk with him after we're done.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
And Chairman, also, just for the record, the actual notice of decision that the clerk of the board office sends out, we will also have that information with that notice of decision as well.
Okay.
If there's an error, though, shouldn't I be allowed to present it before I have to go to court?
Not here because we don't have any of those details. We have nothing to...
I brought the presentation. I believe there's someone from the assessor here that can speak on their side.
Mr. Chairman, this is not the appropriate time for that. The appropriate place and time for him to present his case will have to be at tax court. He had the ability to present that at the Board of Equalization, and the Board of Equalization has ruled upon whatever evidence and information was presented by both the individual and the assessor's office, which attends those hearings at that time.
Okay. And since you live in Oracle, you would be, Mr. McClure would be your representative, and you will...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just real quick, I think the confusion is that the Board of Equalization acts as the Board of Supervisors. So that presentation at the Board of Equalization is the same as being before the Board of Supervisors. Because is that a good analogy to counsel?
That is correct. When you appoint the hearing officer for the Board of Equalization, they are standing in your stead.
They're standing in our spot. They hear the evidence, and then they rule on it. You want to appeal that decision, which is fine, but you can't appeal until we, like, get it to the next step. And then you'll have another opportunity to present your case to the tax court. Is that correct?
But the state law allows you to change the classification from assessor or hearing officer.
We were the Board of Equalization. Board of Equalization was the Board of Supervisors.
That's right.
They sat in our place.
But today, you have the ability to change the hearing...
No, we don't.
No, that is not correct.
No, we do not. That's not how that reads.
That ship has passed after the hearing was done with the Board of Equalization because the Board of Equalization was delegated the power by the Board of Supervisors to hear those matters based on that expertise and our delegation and appointment of them to sit and hear those cases.
That is not what the ARS says. The county board may change any valuation that is valued by the assessor or hearing officer. I do not get, and I do not get any due process through this whole process. They charged me $250 a square foot for my house. The assessor's is valued at like $113 a square foot, and mine's a storage shed at $250. Completely unfair, drags me through the whole process, and I have to now go through the courts just to say that, yes, you guys are being unfair.
But we have, Scott is going to help you after this. It's not over. This is not the final today. So you do have some options. Also Supervisor McClure's office is here in this building, so hang around afterwards, and they will get you on your way to assist. Because this, I know, this can be so confusing to a citizen that's not involved with the government. So we all want to help make this equitable for you.
And Mr. Chairman, to clarify, this is not a hearing at this time. This is merely to ratify the decisions so that the process can move forward.
Yeah. So we can't go forward until we ratify this, and then you still do have some options, which we're going to make sure you get. Okay. I think...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For legal counsel, is it possible to ratify all of the decisions of the board with the exception of this particular case?
My answer, that would be no, because at that point in time, there's a clock ticking for this gentleman in which he has to file his next step notice of appeal. And that kicks from, I believe it's 60 days. Is that right, Natasha? Yes, she's nodding her head.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and so we've delegated our authority to make the decisions and to hear these appeals to the Board of Equalization.
That is correct.
And so we just receive these decisions en masse and then approve them.
That's correct. You ratified the decisions that were made and the assessments that were determined by the Board of Equalization sitting in your stead. And that is, that essentially is so that the clock can start ticking for individuals to go ahead and appeal their taxes. And there is statutory deadlines, you know, before the end of the year and so forth, or when appeals need to be go ahead and filed. And in fact, you know, someone needs to pay their taxes before they can even appeal their taxes. Because if you don't pay, you cannot appeal. And that's statutory.
Okay. And how long ago did we, just for the sake of clarification for the citizen, how long ago did we delegate our authorities on these matters to the Board of Equalization?
I'd have to defer to the clerk of the board, but every year, you routinely go to the State Board of Equalization, and they assign someone that you ratified to hear these things. And it's usually, Natasha, I want to say probably in the summertime, springtime period that you do that?
So normally, there's a contract that comes before the board around February or March every year to renew the actual contract. Also, I will say, I came to the county in 2018. We have been utilizing the service since then, and actually, we was utilizing it before. That was the practice before I even got here. So I want to say, I know it's been over 10 years that the Board of Supervisors has been contracting with the State Board of Equalization.
Mr. Chairman, I've been here 10 years, and we've been using that method since I took office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any other questions. I think that clarifies it for anybody who's listening.
Okay.
Did you come before the Board of Equalization?
Yes.
You did, okay.
And then I made a comment to the clerk of the board of how it was unjust. She never responded to that. And I've also copied the clerk of the board with the state.
Okay. So I think I have to ask for a motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item F as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Thank you, guys.
And those nays don't mean we're not with you.
Yeah. File your appeal.
Okay, public hearing for approval/disapproval for a special use permit for a wireless communication facility. Glenn Bach.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glenn Bach here, senior planner. I just wanted to begin by stating that for the record, the 207 waiver has been provided to the clerk of the board's office at this time. And I'll begin my slideshow. Okay. Okay, SUP 012-22 is proposed a special use permit request to continue to maintain a wireless communications facility, size of parcels of acre and a quarter. This is just south of Ray Junction Road and west of Highway 177. Richard Allen Morris being the owner and Crown Castle being the applicant, represented by Mike Campbell, who's here today. This shows you the general location of the facility, just a little bit south, or correction, northwest of Kearney. Shows you the more specific location of the property here, very close to the 177. Aerial photo of the property. And this is a coverage map provided by AT&amp;T estimated coverage without this facility. This then shows you the coverage with the continued operation of this facility for AT&amp;T. This would then be T-Mobile's coverage without, and then the coverage with the continued existence of the facility. Here, you have a site plan showing where it exists in relation to the property lines. And this is elevation showing the tower. Looking north from the 177, also south, and then we have east, and lastly, west, and you could see the wireless facility itself. This is a site plan from 2004, when it was initially approved. Essentially, nothing has changed since then. I pulled up 2008 aerial just to show nothing has changed. So items of consideration continued, coverage needed for Kearney area. It's been in existence since it was approved in 2005. Traffic impacts minimal, and coverage maps show increased coverage with the continued existence, and staff has not received any letters of opposition.
Okay, there's only one E in Kearney, and they get very offended when you misspell it.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So staff's recommendation is for approval with 17 stipulations. The applicant is here. I believe he wants to speak to the board as well.
Okay. We are ready to hear from him.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman and supervisors. I'm Michael Campbell, consultant for Crown Castle. First off, I want to thank Glenn for his assistance through the process. This one's been a kind of a long-running case, but I think we're at the end run here. As noted, the Monopole served this area with AT&amp;T and T-Mobile's coverage for approximately 20 years. Continuation of this SUP for the wireless facility is needed to prevent, obviously, shutdown of the site, which would create a deficiency in the network, it would affect the public, first responders, everything, commuters along Highway 177. As noted, we gave public notification, have not heard any response from the owners or anybody that lives around there. I met with the ownership yesterday, Mr. Morris, which he signed Prop 207 for me, and he was concerned about signing it, and it ties into... And he was concerned about signing it, and it ties into stipulation 17, which, you know, kind of diversing here, but my client has read and reviewed the stipulations 1 through 17. One that they have an issue with is number 16, requiring a block wall put around this. Mr. Morris also had a problem with that, but he agreed to sign the Prop 207 to move things forward. At the planning commission hearing, my client recommended, proposed an alternate design for the block wall, and this is a, it's a fence paneling situation. And it is proposed, the company is Simtech. Panel wall is made, it's an embedded, get this right, polyethylene, which is a synthetic resin reinforced with galvanized steel. The color is embedded into the facility, into the units. It's wind certified 130 miles an hour. It's heat certified to 140, although we might have pushed that this July. At the planning commission meeting, there was concern about fading, peeling, chipping of what could happen to this. And I recommended, at that time, that there be a stipulation, and I see that is actually number 17, is that my client, Crown Castle, would be responsible for continued maintenance of the wall or the fence, whatever is around her. And that is a very standard requirement for all of the cell sites. So, the push by Crown Castle to go with this is that it costs about one-third of putting up a block wall. The compound is 80 linear foot minus a 10-foot gate access. They'd have 70 linear foot of block as compared to 70 linear foot of this composite fencing material. And if I may, do I give here to the clerk? This is a presentation, what I printed out, sorry, I printed out, from Simtech.
Okay, I want to, don't want to ruin your train of thought, but they mentioned T-Mobile only. Does this help all the providers?
It's T-Mobile and AT&amp;T.
But what if, there's many other providers? Does it help? Only those two are accessed?
Yes, at this point, yes. Verizon is obviously welcome to go on there. It's a co-locatable structure, has been for years. T-Mobile's just on there, I think, in the last five years. It's stood alone for AT&amp;T's coverage for, since 2004.
And for first responders, does it help in any way to get better coverage?
If they're on, on one of those networks, yes.
Okay.
I don't believe there's any first responders antennas on the structure, but I know Crown Castle is always amenable to assisting emergency services across the nation for verticality.
What's around the facility now? If it's been there for 20 years, what's there now?
Couple of houses to the north.
No, okay.
Oh, what's, I'm sorry. What's securing it now?
The perimeter protection.
Chain link fence.
Chain link fence.
And it's been, there's been no issues. And obviously, my client would know there'd be issues because they'd have to go out and fix it. But there's been a chain link fence, I think it's eight foot tall, that has surrounded it. Initially, we proposed coming in with a slatted chain link fence, and got the pushback that wanted to go block wall. It's virtually in middle of, I would say, middle of nowhere. There are some residents that live to the north, and they've depended on this service.
So, so then my question would be, why now do we need to put a block wall around it when the chain link fence has been there for 20 years?
I asked that myself.
I bet you did, so.
Did you read the transcript? It almost drove me nuts. I agree. I don't know what we're, what we're accomplishing is in the middle of nowhere, and it says traffic is minimal. It ain't no traffic, except whoever goes up there and works on the thing.
According to the wireless ordinance with the county, a new special use permit for a wireless facility requires certain standards, and a full screening of the equipment-
There, there has to be-
With a block wall is, is the number one requirement.
So this is an ordinance, common sense issue, yep.
So, after the, after the P and Z, I was advised to come in and ask, in lieu of the block wall, can we do this fence paneling? My client would honestly like to keep up the chain link fence. DPS, sheriff, they all like, when we see, have a remote location like this, they want to be able to see in there.
Yes.
They want to be able to drive by and make sure nothing's going on in there. So, but in order to continue the operation of this facility-
That's, see, there has to be exceptions to the rules here or something, or-
So in this case, you'd have to apply a variance to this?
Bingo.
I'm seeing yes nods. So.
Okay. Do you have any more to present? This is a public hearing, we need to hear from the public.
No, I don't. I, any other questions?
I'm sure we're going to have more questions for you. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and back to us discussing.
So, okay, Mr. Chair, I mean, can we propose a variance here? Is this the place to do that? Can, can we upset the, everybody here and see what's going? Oh, good.
As I suspected, you know, what the board has the option to do is just remove that stipulation that applies to the block wall. I don't know if that was stipulation 16 or 17 that requires the block wall, because I don't have that in front of me. 16? So you would approve it, you know, with the omission of stipulation 16?
Yeah. Is this worth putting off for another meeting until we can have these? So, we can do it now.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 10. Minus, so with the 17 stipulations, minus number 16. Does that work?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think that went through.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Item number 11, discussion approval. Budget amendment to increase capacity for Development Services General Fund. Joe?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Angie Woods, Department Head for Office of Budget and Finance. I have an item before you today requesting budget amendment for Development Services. The amendment was submitted to my office after the reorganization that occurred. I have Mr. Ortiz here with me today, if you have any questions. I did provide his documentation to you on the agenda item.
Any, any questions? Or Joe?
If you'd like, I can give you a quick background and description on how we got to this point, if that helps. As, well, Joe Ortiz, Pinau County Development Services Managing Director. Good morning, board. As Angie mentioned, yes, this relates to several months ago, through the request of management to help facilitate some of these issues that, that, that keep popping up, and, and more importantly, trying to have some better flexibility with Public Works and Community Development Departments and some of that overlap that we have with each other. It was determined to merge those two departments into this Development Services. And as part of that merge, we look closely at Community Development, and there were some obvious horsepower-type issues that needed to be addressed specifically for some of these customer service experiences that we could probably capture upfront, giving some attention to those, not only to the customers, but having to be that liaison, ombudsman for the customer, but for the board as well, and for staff, tying that all together and having that horsepower available for that, that purpose. So that's where these Development Service Managers classifications came into play. They'll actually have a working title of district manager. We're requesting three of those, and we'll assign one to each district. Since we only have three, there'll be two of those that will be assigned to districts. But that's just the operational standpoint of how we would like to handle this. As mentioned, what these positions will be is that liaison, that ombudsman, that central point of contact for the customer, it's a central point of contact for the board, even that central point of contact for staff to know, okay, that if there's something going on, if the customer ran into a snag, these individuals should be able to bird dog it through. I really like the aspect of these positions, being able to, well, we normally have two types of customers that come into Community Development. We'll have the construction developer-type contractor come in, and they live in this world. They live in the Community Development world, and they, for most part, know how the workflow is and what the process is. Where we really have the challenge comes when, whenever we have these one-time folks that come in, the mom and pop that has some property, now they want to put a house on it or mobile on it. They had no idea what the process is. They're coming in cold turkey, and they'll, they'll probably come to that building one time in their life. So, we really need to, right up front, help and educate and spoon-feed those individuals on that process, and that's what these positions will help do. Part of, part of that, too, is, the hope is to make these, these individuals flexible and mobile. Of course, their primary housing will be here in the Community Development Building, but also, we want to give them some flexibility to maybe work in a satellite office in, in, in your areas, have some scheduled time so they can meet some of those folks in those areas as well. So, that's the hope to all this position, to hopefully facilitate a better customer experience. That's the bottom line.
Sounds good. It's a big, like you said, it's a big county, and the more you can bring government to the people, it's better than having them come all the way down here. Okay, this is not a public hearing. We're just going to ask for a motion if there's no more discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, you?
Oh, fine, thank you, sir.
Let's do it, let's do it. Let's get it done.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 11 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
You don't even get to talk at all.
All in favor, though.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that covers. Any requests for future agenda items? We had one come up already today with the, the questions about the Sheriff's Department and the jail, so we'll work on that. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I would like, I understand that the county's, in light of this last week with the breach of these superintendent of schools, data breach for paychecks and all that, I'd like to understand the county's working with Ms. Bressard and her department to uncover the issues related to the data breach and ways to overcome future similar incidents. Could we here or have a report or a discussion item on this in the near future, obviously with security issues being brought out in the public, or, you know, not bringing out too many security issues in the public?
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I met with Leo Lou, the county manager, and the sun corridor Irene Higgs yesterday. We were going to have a presentation in a future study session, I believe, is what we finally decided on. But again, to give you, everybody kind of a better idea of what we got going transportation-wise, we have several entities, and it's better that we understand each one of them and what their role is, so. We will have something coming down. I don't know if they set the date or not. Leo, did we, did we establish a date?
It's either going to be this November or December, work sessions, and then we'll bring the other NPOs in as well.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's it then, so before all of our phones blow up here soon, we should probably adjourn.
Head to the subway.